Yeah, I like. There's some. I don't know. I think it was good, but it's too.
Steve, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Here. Daniel. Here. Urban. Here. Ronnie. Here. First up is minutes of July and 11th and 25th. Does anyone object to hearing those together? All right. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes of July 11th and July 25th, 2023.
I'll second. Security discussion. Roll call. Addams?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Urban?
No.
Amy?
Yes.
Thank you. Next up is mayor's comments. I don't have a lot to say at this point in time. I'll add more later. In the packet is the draft portion of the master plan from February 2023. I just received that copy of that plan, and it's just for your information, for reference, or input, or whatever you want. And then next up is, if you have any questions about it, you can call me. Yes?
Do you know if there is? I haven't been able to get through all of those. Is there an executive summary somewhere?
Oh, it's 350 pages long. And you can check the table of contents and what part interests you. It's not complete yet. I would hope that we have some time for info before it's completed and passed. But, so no. Okay. Thank you. And the link to the document was not working earlier, but I believe that's been fixed, so you can reference that anytime you like. We were going to add a law enforcement update, but something must come up because we have no law enforcement officer here. So with that, we will get on with public comments. If you'd like to make a public comment, please identify yourself, state your name, and where you live, and keep it to three minutes, follow the guidelines on the wall there. And anybody who would like to make a public comment is welcome to come over to the podium.
Steve Smith, 517 North Hauser in town, and I'm a member of the airport board. Couple of points quickly. I want to remind everybody here and the council members that this master plan that's being developed, it's in the preliminary stage, but both the city and the county are co-signatories to it. It cannot be finalized, will not be finalized, without the acceptance and approval of both parties. So the idea that something might come up in the plan that someone would object to on the city or county side won't happen because both parties have to sign off on it. All right. In that master plan that Christian has included in the agenda packet, it's a lot of material. Granted, there's protocol for applying for the master plan, and the engineer has to follow all the steps, include all the information. There is a map in the section of the airport layout plan. It's on the second page of the whole document, and it shows an area designated as the airport. So there's been some question as to, well, that seems bigger or greater, less including territory that is, maybe should or should not be in the master plan. That map is what the FAA has on file as the airports, and that's from two previous master plan studies that were done. That is not the proposed, the master plan is not proposing the boundaries on that particular map for the airport going forward. And there are, there is a city committee working on boundaries along with the county. They're working in conjunction. There are discussions back and forth. So again, nothing can occur seemingly out of the ordinary that one or the other parties would do something that the other party would not approve of. There could be no backroom dealing. It's all out in front. Also included in the master plan, actually not included in the master plan, is expansion. I've heard some talk about the airport is going to be expanded. It might affect Remington Ranch, it might affect the golf course, it might affect some outline areas, adjacent areas to the airport. And that simply is not the case. The airport is constrained by a number of things. It cannot get any bigger. You can't encompass more territory. In fact, the master plan proposal at this point is to actually reduce the length of the runway a little bit. So there's really no, there's no chance, no opportunity for expanding the airport out of the current footprint of the airport.
Thank you, Steve. Does anybody else wish to make a comment? Public comment time?
I'll be Steve Smith, bar two. In reality, Bo Ewald, 8 Franklin Lane, Red Lodge. I'm also one of your representatives on the airport committee. And we'll just sort of follow on from what Steve said. I don't know if we have this corrected map on the screen this time, but this was the map that we showed last time. And the orange boundary, the orange and yellow is the actual airport as the FAA knows it today and as we all know it today. And what we've proposed in working with some council members is that the airport become what's now bounded in yellow, so smaller than it currently is. Smaller, and you've all seen this, but smaller than it currently is, but still being able to meet safety and operational requirements for the airport. And so that's what it is that we're proposing. We understand that a couple of the city administration people had questions about one little corner right here, and why was that part of the airport? And we believe that in the, so this is for the council in particular, that in the longer run, one of the two north-south ways to get through Red Lodge, one will be Broadway, and the other honestly will become Airport Road as sort of a ring road around town. And the more that we can do to get parking and things off of Airport Road and on a side road will be better. So we're proposing that the main entrance to the airport move over here off of what is called South Airport Road, but we all know it as the entrance to Remington Ranch, and that there be a parking area over there. So that entrance to and from the airport is not on Airport Road any longer, but is rather over here, there parking. So that's sort of a sensible, practical thing that we're, what we would use that area for. And so the, we expect there also at some point will be a business at the airport taking care of airplanes and taking over the fuel business that we've operated and that sort of thing, and we would expect it to be in that area. So if you don't have a copy of this and would like one, let me know, and we'll get you one, and it's also in various places. So thanks very much.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to make a comment? Is there anyone online who'd like to make a comment? Public comment, please. All right, last call for public comment. All right. Thank you. Next up, we have standing committees, and the only committee that has a item is Land Use and Planning Ordinance 911. It's the First Amendment of that ordinance, and it's up for discussion. So who would like to introduce that?
Mayor, may I back up to red men and finance? Yes, I just wanted to give an update. If I may.
Sure.
Jen Baddles has had her hands full and does not have time to update the budget document in regard to the unanswered questions about the audit and other things, and so I've agreed to take that over. So just wanted to make everybody aware of that. So.
All right, next time, let me know so that we can schedule it in the comments. Have it on the radio. Thank you. Okay, are you, is that it?
That's it.
Okay, yes. All right, now, who is going to introduce the topic of Ordinance 911?
So Ordinance 911 is our camping ordinance that was adopted 2014. And so this amendment got brought up initially. There was a drafted amendment that came from the Land Use and Planning Committee, and looking at what was proposed in that amendment, essentially to give slightly more allowances to overnight camping. I took that and tried to kind of draft it in a way, thinking about, you know, what might be some of the loopholes, what might be some of the restrictions that would need to be placed on some of these proposed ways that we're going to, to open up camping. So some of the goals of this amendment is to address, you know, guests of property owners who travel in RVs and maybe want to park their RV and sleep in it for a couple nights on the streets in front of the property of where they're visiting, and also address visitors to Red Lodge that may be driving back to their camp sites in Perry. So we often get requests from folks who are coming in town for a couple of days, maybe are older, or just looking for a place closer to town so that they can walk to venues that they are planning on if they're here for a certain event, and would like to be able to walk from their RVs or have a short drive to and from their camp sites. So we kind of took this, made some amendments. It's definitely not in any sort of like, let's vote on it now. We are kind of at the point now where I'd like to hear feedback from council, get more direction from council before we continue to make amendments from it, and just make sure that this is the direction that council and the community would like for us to move forward with.
Thank you. So this is a land use and planning issue, so what do you think are the points that you'd like to amend?
So, sorry, I think I'll chime in here and just say, like, Land Use and Planning volleyed this back and forth since probably about March, and just looked at it from the perspective of currently there is no camping within city limits, period, like, or on public spaces, and then also restricted in terms of, like, residents can't have visitors have an RV out in front of their house for a couple of days to camp in. It's not allowed right now. And so originally, the discussion was just, the community, we've gotten a couple of folks who have said, we would like to have some allowances for when our, you know, when property owners have people visiting, and also we want to permit sleepy or impaired driving. And so that was where it came from. We also recognize that right now is kind of a moment in Montana and elsewhere across the nation in terms of dealing with urban camping in general. And so the idea is, I, from my perspective on that committee, I'd like to just go around and see if anybody has any opinions at this table from the get-go, like, do you have a gut feeling, do you have questions, what are those questions? Do you think that these two goals for this ordinance are appropriate? Are we missing something? And then also, this is an opportunity as discussion to alert the community that we're talking about this. If you have opinions as a resident, please start chiming in and sending us emails or otherwise reaching out. You can come to a land use and planning meeting. There's not a rush on this, but the idea is to be thoughtful and to start gathering input. So we don't, I don't know as a committee member where everybody else, where everybody else currently stands on the topic, so it'd be nice to maybe just go around and write down.
Thank you. Terry?
I'd like to hear from Chris, because she's on Land Use and Planning, and so what is your feelings on it?
I'd like to allow, I think the, well, first of all, I would like to start over and maybe rescind this ordinance and start over, and maybe have a clearer picture of what we're trying to accomplish once we get input from everybody, because I think this one's unwieldy. I would like to allow for, you know, we have friends that come into town in campers or vans, and I would like them to be able to park next to our house for a couple of days. And I think that's a reasonable thing. I, I think, you know, given what's happening in Bozeman and other places regarding camping, we're probably, this is not, in my opinion, the place to address that. This is, I think, for just limited camping. So I would like to have places for people to be able to do that. I think van life is pretty common now, and I think it's a big tourism aspect. You know, we do it ourselves. We go to places where we can bring our camper and camp out for a couple nights, and for music festivals, or art fairs, or whatever. So I think it's an appropriate use for Red Lodge.
Thank you. Would you like, Terry?
How about you? Look, I always go first and take up a lot of time, all of these guys going all in and outside.
Well, I've already been getting a lot of feedback from constituents that are very concerned about specifically the public overnight camping on public property designated and identified for overnight camping by the city, you know, as an exemption to this. They really don't, they're very concerned about, well, where's that going to be, and, you know, who's going to pick where that's going to be, and aren't we opening up, you know, a can of worms where we'll end up with the same problem that other resort communities have that are having housing issues? So, and I guess in order for me to decide yea or nay on this, I would want those spaces pre-identified and not just blanket, okay, well, we'll let you park over there type of thing. I guess, I think it needs more structure in that, if I were in order to get any type of support on that, because right now, we don't have that. You know, there is no public overnight camping in town. And then I didn't know, on the waiver, it looks like we added considering for-profit or nonprofit status. I'm like, I don't think that should matter. I mean, we, I don't think an event, whether it's for-profit or nonprofit, I mean, it's either they qualify or they don't, to me. So, I mean, we've gotten kind of away from, from doing that type of subjective type thing, or the benefit, you know, or any additional cost to the city. I mean, that's all part of the event application. So I guess I would just, some of this, I think, can be addressed in the event application itself, and not necessarily in this ordinance. And then I didn't know, Jen and I talked a little bit about these generators being prohibited in residential zoned areas. Yes, that's fine, but public use districts, you know, typically that's a park, and if we have an event where they have camping, there again, I think that that can be addressed with the event application itself. You know, if it's up by the rodeo grounds and they have a generator going, I don't think it's really going to be that big of a deal versus, you know, if you're at Lions Park type of thing, you know, or if you're at the civic center where there's houses right across the street. So I guess, you know, I just, there's a lot in here that, and I guess I kind of agree with Chris, that there's a lot in here that make it very bulky and kind of contradicts itself in a couple different places. So, yeah, as written, I absolutely would have issues with a lot of different things in it.
But in general, do you think we should be considering camping or within city limits at all?
I think we need to have a very thoughtful conversation about it. I'm not opposed to if you have a family member coming in and they're bringing an RV, or, you know, or a camper, being able to park in front of your house. But you have to be careful, because the reason why this was passed back in 2014 was because people were just pulling up in front of people's houses and camping, and with the parking the way that it is, a lot of people, you know, yeah, I mean, they didn't have room in front of their house for an RV and parking, so they were taking up their neighbor's spots. And it's all public parking, but there's no way to say, you know, all of a sudden they're taking up five spots, or, you know, four spots. So there's a reason why it was passed and why it was put in place like this.
Who else would like to speak?
I, I mean, I kind of piggyback off what Jody says. It's, I'm reading one thing, and then I go down to prohibitions, and I read the same thing that I just wrote up here in definition. So it definitely needs some cleaning up. I, yeah, I don't, I have family that comes in with RVs also, but I also put them on a separate piece of land that we own somewhere further away out of town, just so that, one, they're not disruptive to neighbors or whatnot. And I would, you know, I would hope that other people would take the same consideration. But, yeah, I mean, if it's something that needs to be addressed, if we have designated places and a cleaned-up ordinance, more definitive, I think I could look into it more.
Okay, so my comments, I agree with most of what's been said. I guess I just see how our, the condition our streets are in now, and going back to the amount of parking we have, and then I'd like to know, I noticed that residential non-commercial properties weren't listed here, which is important. So I would like to see along with this a map and where you're proposing what can happen. And I will tell you, I'm concerned when I see non-commercial camping on private properties in commercial districts exceeding 14 days in the calendar year, can get a permit at no cost, and put it in their window. And so at one point, I mean, we just went through limiting STRs, right? Everybody wants to put a limit on that. So where's going to be the limit on the number of trailers, RVs, or whatever we have parked on our streets in town? And I think that's a big concern. And while maybe somebody wants something parked in front of their house, maybe the neighbor across the street doesn't want to look at it. So I do think that, you know, I'm certainly not going to say absolutely not, but I just see this is kind of opening a can of worms. And so I'd like to see, again, real thoughtful consideration to go into this before we see it again.
Any more comments? And I'll be talking on it. I'll just mention that part of this came up because people come into town, and when the pass is closed, you know, we invite everybody to come, and they're campers, and then we have no places for them to stay, which is essentially asking them to leave. People come into town, and if the pass is closed or the weather's bad, and there's nowhere for them to go. Yeah, it's, it's, creates a hardship for people and difficult situation for law enforcement. So we'll have more discussions.
Are we still allowing them to park, like, in the civic center parking lot, or?
That's not for overnight camping. No, there is no overnight camping in the city Red Lodge.
Unless it's already been.
Yeah, maybe. Cardi, did you have anything to add?
Um, well, so I'm glad to hear, like, Jody's comment about trying to pre-identify places because we had sort of, we sort of talked about that at the beginning of that should, that needing to be a separate conversation and a separate resolution to designate, you know, whether, and so some of the places that have been tossed, tossed out that I've heard from staff, council members, and members of the public, is, you know, we've talked about coal miners, that parking area near the Dow Park, near the rodeo grounds, and then the civic center, just turning that into overnight, and, and then in creating sort of a similar model that other communities have, where they have publicly owned overnight camping, where it's limited to a certain number of days, there aren't hookups, it's really just minimal impact, and it's just, you know, and I've utilized those types of camp sites before in the communities above and along the High Line. So that's sort of the direction we are heading, and so it's good to hear that you would like to have them identified as part of this ordinance rather than a separate discussion later on. We can start having these conversations.
So if nobody else has any further comment, if you all have any comments that you'd like to share, please make note. You can mention them at the next meeting, or kind of send them out, get some call, contact list, for all ears. These are sticky situations, and it's not typically one size. It's all, it's swapping one bigger problem for what's hopefully one smaller problem. We'll see how it goes. Okay, next up is the City Airport Committee, and the City Airport Committee has proposed Ordinance 966 to establish the Red Lodge Airport Area, and that's up for discussion. And prior to that, I'm going to read you some of my notes. I have the benefit of staying in City Hall every day, every week, all the time. And I've had a lot of feedback from each of the department heads, and I've attended a lot of the meetings of the airport, and council gets to vote on however they'd like to proceed with each of these issues. But as mayor, given the size of this project, I feel like I have an obligation to let you know my thoughts. And so I'm, please pardon any gorginess that I may have, but I'll, I'll address some issues. First thing is whether or not it's an expansion. It is a proposal that the hangar area need to be expanded. There'll be significantly more hangars and parking areas for airplanes. And I believe that the perimeter of that hangar area is proposed to be larger also in the draft. Additionally, the 2010 and 2018 agreement only, the boundary at that time was only the hangar area. And, you know, this is, this is the legal document that more than 20 people reviewed. So that's the black and white paper that has been, you know, used as our document. So that's what I'm going on. So, you know, you can, you can say what you want of it, but I'm just going by the legal documents. Anyway, this evening, council will hear a proposal from the City Airport Committee to discuss an ordinance to create a boundary dedicating over 100 acres of city-owned land to the Red Lodge Airport. This is probably the biggest decision that will be made in Red Lodge for a long time to come, and I want to make sure you all understand the facts of the situation. As my, as mayor, my job is to represent the city and the people who live here and to look at all needs of the city of Red Lodge and its future. I am not against the airport. In fact, if we're going to have an airport, I want the best we can have, the same as I do with other city services and facilities. The question in front of council tonight is, how much city land should the city dedicate to the use of the airport? The city owns all of the land occupied by and around the airport and the airport and the area for emergency operations, except that which belongs to the fair and rodeo grounds. The airport currently has 27 hangars. Of those 27, 17 belong to county residents, of which three live in the city. The city gets no revenue from the hangars, and those who build hangars are free to sublet them or sell them for profit with Airport Board approval. The board leases the city land to the hangar owners at 10 and 1/2 cents per square foot, with all the funds going back to the board. For example, the city owns one hangar, it's probably big enough for two or three airplanes, and it's leased to the Flying Club for $335 per year. The Flying Club subleases a portion of that hangar to a private pilot for an undisclosed amount. The proposed hangar area approved by the Airport Board will allow for an additional 22 new hangars and 26 airplane parking spaces, none of which will create any revenue for the city. The city hangar would be torn down. The airport is forecasted to increase by an additional 1,000 flights per year, typically during the summer months over the next 15 years. This activity provides no revenue for the city's general fund, escalating wages, infrastructure, or maintenance. The city is unable to provide pay increases to our employees to keep up with the cost of living. We struggle to maintain our workforce as we have never raised mills, and our costs continue to increase. If you look around, even our city hall could use hundreds of thousands of dollars of work, and that's true for most of our city buildings. Our utility costs continue to rise. We have no jail facility and could use a modern building for law enforcement. Included in the agenda packet is another letter of appreciation for the CART program. A month or so ago, I received an inquiry about whether the city had a garage space for the vehicle that the CART program uses. The CART program shuttles people to their dock. the city. The city hangar would be torn down. The airport is forecasted to increase by an additional 1,000 flights per year, typically during the summer months over the next 15 years. This activity provides no revenue for the city's general fund escalating wages, infrastructure, or maintenance. The city is unable to provide pay increases to our employees to keep up with the cost of living. We struggle to maintain our workforce as we have never raised mills and our costs continue to increase. If you look around, even our city hall could use hundreds of thousands of dollars of work, and that's true for most of our city buildings. Our utility costs continue to rise. We have no jail facility and could use a modern building for law enforcement. Included in the agenda packet is another letter of appreciation for the CART program. A month or so ago, I received an inquiry about whether the city had a garage space for the vehicle that the CART program uses. The CART program shuttles people to their doctor's appointments, the grocery store, the pharmacy, and a myriad of other things. It's a nonprofit heavily utilized, heavily utilized by our communities, disabled and the elderly, and anyone else who needs a ride. It's our only sort of public transportation. I was sorry to have to tell them we did not have a space for their vehicle, although I can sure see why an ice and snow free vehicle would be a benefit to those who drive or ride with the service. The city does not provide any funds to the CART program. With assistance, I could see the program expand, maybe even for Billings Airport connections and tourism shuttles, which would also benefit our community with increased resort tax. In just two years, the CART program has provided over 7,500 rides to area riders. I mention that to compare how we are spending our tax dollars, what those dollars provide, and to whom. For an example, one way city property can create revenue, we lease the city land to the bowling alley for $8,000 a year, yet we get no return in revenue from the airport property. I hear the concern, but what about emergency services? We need the area for emergency services. The airport and emergency services are two separate things. The emergency services area is clear of all buildings, in large part because it was not part of the 2018 agreement. It does not need to be part of the airport, and it shouldn't be. It takes minimal, if any, maintenance. The area is owned and utilized by the city for emergency services, and it should remain that way. It was not part of the 2018 agreement. The map council will present provides a large area for crosswind runways within the emergency operations area. Those runways do not have protection zones like the main runway has, even though they're directly over Worth Avenue. Is that safe? We've had two airplane crashes in a month this summer. Thankfully, those accidents did not hit any structures and no one was seriously injured or killed. There's been a lot of conflict in this situation, and I'd say none of it has been desired or necessary. What we should be doing is planning together for the future of Red Lodge and making the very best use of that area as possible. Neither I nor council has experience in these sort of major planning issues. In order to optimize the very best uses for the area between Airport Road and Remington Ranch, Van Dyke Park, and Country Club Estates, it's my opinion that we should study how to best use the property and hire a planning company who does that sort of thing. We have a future growth plan that needs to be updated, and this is the perfect time to do it. The growth policy says, how does expansion, well, no, it doesn't say that. Specifically, this plan provides policy guidance for the public investment in infrastructure and land use decision that will determine the pattern and quality of future development. Is this in line with that policy? Future uses of the bench property has never been studied, but now within our growing community, it should be. With residential development happening at the pace that it is, people are going to have increasing concerns about noise, lighting, and most importantly, safety. If we turn all that area over to the airport board, which currently only has one member from the city who happens to be a pilot, we will lose much of that control, along with any other future opportunities that we may have. If we could take a step back, look at what the community wants and needs, we could do some really cool things up there. Maybe we could have a garage for the CART vehicles. Maybe we could generate revenue to offset our growing city expenses. Maybe we could have more attractions like the observatory. Maybe we could build a new law enforcement center for hearings in our law enforcement patrols, or how about an area for affordable housing, commerce, or maybe a new long-term care facility for our aging population. We could explore these things and keep the runway and hangars for existing airport users and ensure that we keep a place for emergency operations. It would be proactive and responsible, and it would look something like something the whole community would help create. But we can't do that if we don't stop and look at the options. With the few resources we have, we have got to plan carefully for the future. The proposal you're about to hear from council includes the emergency operations area being controlled by the airport board, which will remove it from most, if not all, city oversight. There has been no public presentations outside of council meetings and no further information to let the community know what's going on. There has been no information on how the proposed changes will affect the people who live here, including information about noise, safety, and lighting. The community needs to be part of this conversation with input, guidance, and ideas from the people who do this sort of thing. So my vote is in favor of providing a boundary to the airport that includes the existing hangar area and the runway as it has been since at least 2010, limiting for now further expansion until such time as we get planning professionals to work with the city on this issue. We will draft an MOU ensuring that emergency operations will continue where they are, keeping that area open for optimal use. And we will contract with a forward-thinking planning firm like the ones who have led us through all the webinars and other planning issues to keep Red Lodge a resilient, sustainable, and forward-thinking community. And Lonnie has a couple maps that we'll put up. Lonnie, if you could put up the map that Dennison had on the initial, with the Google map. I'm just showing you this for reference in case you haven't, you don't know exactly what we're talking about.
I just have a, let's see, a request for information or point of information. Why is your speech not under Mayor's Comments? We're prepared to talk about ordinance 966. No, I can tell you that.
Hold on. Yeah, so this, this is the existing airport area, and those are the existing hangars that are currently there. Maybe there's a few more because it's a Google map and it could be a couple years old. And there's other, you know, photos. I mean, we all know what's up there, but can you bring to the other? And this is the additional hangars, the green ones are hangars that would be built. You can see the existing hangars, they're white. The green ones are the ones that would be built, just so that we're all on the same page with what the plan proposes. And to answer your question, Terry, I did say that I would be making the rest of my mayor's comments at this time.
I said we're on the agenda, require us to agree.
This is not the time for arguing.
I'm not arguing, I'm asking for a point of clarification, as I can do by the Robert's Rules Cheat Sheet, which says I may interrupt a speaker. And I'm trying to be civil about this, but I'm just saying, you don't ever allow us to interject, and so it would be just nice in the future if you're going to make comments and you're the mayor. This is a legislative session here, make them under Mayor's Comments.
We are following the agenda, please stick to the issues on the agenda. Next up, so with that. Hey, excuse me, we're not going to move on. Excuse me. Thank you. Next up is council, and I'm sure they will have more to add. Who would like to lead that discussion?
I'm going to.
Terry, go ahead.
So we've had two committees that have been working on this airport issue and spending a lot of time. And the reason why we were brought in is because earlier, the mayor was working with the county in Bridger, and they couldn't come up with an agreement, and she terminated the agreement. So I made a resolution a while back that, well, let's instead of blowing up the airport agreement, let the city council, who's a legislative branch, try to work with the county and the airport board in the city of Bridger to come up with something that's workable. Because I believe everybody knows that an airport is a viable part of our community and has been for many years. And so one of the things that we tried to do when we did this last resolution, so I just want to make sure people have background information, was we gave ourselves a date of October 13th, which was three months to come up, with a new airport agreement and also a map that we could all agree in across, across the community. So we had figured out that if we did the ordinance, we did the ordinances, no, ordinance 966, the Red Lodge Airport Boundary Map was presented at the last city council meeting, and it was up for discussion, and it was available for people to look at and to ask questions, and as well as people from the staff here, as well as the city council. We had planned and requested at that city council meeting and also requested in a written form to the mayor to add the vote now on this ordinance 966 with the map. So I'm going to ask Lonnie, can you please put up the map that I sent you today? So this will be the map that we discussed last time, and Steve and Bo were kind enough to answer questions, and I'm sure they would today as well. So what we're just introducing today is the ordinance 966 to establish this airport map. And again, we were planning on having it for a vote, but it looks like it got put down before discussion, so we'll do that. The other thing that we have, and I just want to clarify, you'll look in your agenda packet and you'll see an agreement, and it looks like it's a airport agreement. That is not the right airport agreement. So we will make sure that that agreement is made available to people in the packet for the next city council meeting to review. So please don't look at that and be confused. That is not the airport agreement that we are going to be presenting to city council to vote on. So I just wanted to make both of those clear. So here's the map, and I guess it's a discussion, so if people have any questions that they didn't ask last time, this is a good opportunity to ask them.
I have a question. Are the trails on that map?
All of the trails are outside of the boundary of the airport. And the road is, and the parks are. It is completely, it follows the fence line, the existing fence line, all the way around the airport. And the fence, I don't know how long it's been there, but it's been there as long as I can remember, you know, and it says airport. So you can't just walk in there, you have to go through a gate, you know, so it's all protected airport areas, mainly so people don't get hurt, so they don't go out there and, you know, walk out on the runway or get run over by an airplane. And the only thing that's not in the existing fence line is a little four-acre, I think, tract of land on the southeast corner that Bo referred to, where they would like, and Stephen Bo said they would like to have that become the entrance to the airport. Down the road, they may be building an FBO there, which is kind of, in the future, to have, you know, a base of operations. And they would have an access road going across there. It does not encompass any of the trails, none of the trails are in it, it will not affect Van Dyke Park, the observatories, not in the airport, none of the rodeo grounds. The parking that typically for events and stuff like that is on the west side, and that is all outside of that airport boundary.
And then one, one other thing I think is important to point out, too, is that, Bo, it's at one point giving back, so area that's in the orange is going to be city property. And they, I think, worked very hard to par that map down to where they took the minimal amount that they needed to be safe and be able to qualify for FAA funding, which is really important. So that's another thing to take into consideration.
And the cross runways, just a point of clarification as well, because we asked, you know, do they need those runway protection zones like the main runway does, because they are showing up on this map now? They've been there forever, because they do land on those when the crosswinds are certain direct, you know, that's why they're called cross runways. So they are used, but because they're used only in emergency-type situations, they do not require the RPC zones. So, you know, that, that runway protection zone is not included. Please correct me if I'm saying anything wrong.
Did you get that information from the FAA?
About the runway protection zone? Yeah, I actually got it from the Lance, who was working on the consult, the consultant with the FAA. Yeah.
There you go.
I'll please if there's any other.
I think I, I want to just clarify for folks. There's a couple of things going on here. There's an ordinance that has to have two readings where we talk about the boundary. And then there's the interlocal agreement that the committee that the city has identified, as well as a committee that the county identified, and there is some overlap of the folks, are trying to work on to make sure that the, that this airport continues to be operated by the city and the county. And then Bridger has their own airport, so they're in there too, together. And, and then there's a third piece, which is this master plan that you now have a draft of. And the, I think it's important to just clarify where along the way, like what each one of these documents is meant to do. Identifying the boundary of the airport, the consequence of that is this. The airport belongs to the city just as the land outside of it does. However, wherever we put that boundary line, whatever's inside of that boundary is the airport and can only be used for airport stuff and is managed by an airport board that we choose who we assign to for 20 years. So what the mayor's concern is, whatever we put inside that boundary, we can't decide in five years we want to do something else with it, okay? So I think it's important for everybody to just pay attention to that. And if you have concerns about this body committing that land for the use of the airport, then now is the time to say that. That being said, what is inside that boundary, while it wasn't delineated in the 2010 interlocal agreement with the county or the 2018 interlocal agreement, it is currently land that is being used for airport operations, including emergency response. Okay? So, oh, am I saying something? Well, let me just finish and then, and then, so, so I think that's just important for people to understand, is that if you are residents, we are your elected officials, if you don't think that it's a smart idea or that we are qualified to set aside this land for 20 years for use for the airport, then you need to speak up. The interlocal agreement is, I think, the one piece that I, I haven't heard up here tonight, is a discussion about, or just an acknowledgement of how valuable it is to work well with the county on all kinds of projects, including the airport. The airport benefits us, it also benefits the county. The three of us that are on the city's committee, airport committee, have worked with the city staff to say, look, we think, we think we'd like to keep doing an interlocal agreement and not have the city run the airport on its own. If the interlocal agreement expires, then we have to figure out how to do that ourselves. And our group has decided we'd like to try to work with the county to make sure that we come up with something that works for everybody. To include in that interlocal agreement, who it gets assigned to that airport board, which dictates what happens within that boundary, and what their roles and responsibilities are, and what they're allowed to do and what they're no longer allowed to do. So some of the comments about like how things have been run in the past, we've been trying very hard to work on some of those points of contention, to make sure that this, the interests of the residents of Red Lodge are being well represented, both on that board and in the interlocal agreement. Okay? And then the last piece, in terms of just development of this space, we've been working hard to say, look, if there's any development anywhere, this is still city-owned property, and the development ideas need to come to this body for voting. And that master plan, where that other map came from with the little green dots on it, that's, that's in the master plan, which also has to be approved by whoever's up here when it comes forward. In addition to the interlocal agreement having some language on it that's being proposed, it might not be accepted, but that is being proposed to say, look, the airport board can manage and operate the airport, but they can't make sweeping decisions about development without bringing those to this body. Okay? So that's really, those are the points that I think I want to make, just so people understand what each of these things does. And I would love to have a lot of time to have a broad conversation about the future development of all of our public spaces. And I definitely think it is a big commitment to say we're going to commit this land for this use. to say we're going to commit this land for this use for this long. It is, it is, because it's, it's precluding future things, it's precluding what it could be used for. However, we have an interlocal agreement that as of April 2nd is going to expire on October 13th, and if it does, then we no longer have an agreement with the county about who's going to operate that land and who's going to pay for it. And so, we're trying very hard to just manage a bunch of these things for the benefit of everybody in the community, and that deadline means that we, we just can't have an ad, we just can't have a robust conversation that takes more months and more months and more months. Now, if a bunch of you get up and say, I don't think that city council should be writing resolutions, or this resolution in particular, because we're not qualified to do so, then please say so out loud, and we will let that, then we will let the interlocal agreement expire, and what will happen is, we will then have to figure out how to pay for operating the airport. And now, that wraps us up.
And if that were to be an issue that we would confront, we would discuss it. I don't recall exactly when, I think that the agreement was terminated, what, four months ago? So, we have, we should have most of the information that we'd need to review that. So, we are taking questions, so if you want to bring them to the next meeting, you're welcome to.
A certification?
We'll wait till the next.
I do think I want to.
Excuse me, if we need, we need quiet, if you're going to be here, we need you to be quiet. We're trying to go through.
One question I just have is, since, since the October 13th deadline is now, if we're going to have a first reading on October 10th, which is our next meeting, we will not meet that October 13th deadline. And so, I'd like to ask council to vote on adding an amendment to Resolution 3632, so that we can extend that deadline to December 31st. Will you do that?
Second?
Yeah. Motion to add to the October 10th agenda, an amendment to Resolution number 3632.
To extend that deadline.
Yeah.
To December 31st.
To extend the deadline on that resolution to December 31st.
Yeah, I just said 31st.
Oh, right. Is this resolution number wrong? Remember, we had that whole thing where, so this is right, so it is 3632, thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else have any comments or questions about, or discussion points about this ordinance?
We need to vote on the, her motion.
Yeah, we need to vote on her motion, make sure it gets on the.
Oh, thank you. Any further discussion on the motion?
Did we agree on the date that was voted on?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. We'll call it out.
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Irving?
Yes.
Eve?
Yes.
Lonnie?
Yes.
All right. Does anybody else have any more comments about position for ordinance 966?
I did just want to add, you know, on the master plan, they have the plotted area for the hangars, and those hangar spots are currently plotted, and they have been since John Crinkie was commissioner, and asked for that little subdivision with plotted areas to be done. So, it's not like they're all of a sudden saying, we're going to add all these hangars. They've been there, they just have not had anybody coming forward saying, you know, that many people saying, coming in and saying they want to put a hangar up there, so.
Each of those have been plotted?
Yes, yes, they have been. So, it's not like all of a sudden the Airport Board's saying, we're going to grow this much, it's like, no, those have been there for, since, I don't remember when they were, what date it was when John Crinkie was commissioner, forever, so.
Where is that document?
It's, it's, yeah, it, that's why it was part of the 20, I mean, they're all, were there, that's why, it's a plotted subdivision, so when Mauryan came in and they wanted to change those property lines of where he was going to go.
I was just asking where that document is.
The, the.
Plotted, plotted, what you're referencing.
There's a certificate of survey.
Yeah. That's what I thought, it was like all surveyed out and everything.
Okay. If you could maybe get a copy of that to me, that would be great.
Okay, I'll, I'll get it from somewhere. Do you have it, Courtney?
I may do, actually.
Okay, I like, because I know, because when he wanted to build his hangar, we had to approve moving some of those lot lines, so his hangar would fit.
Yeah, we, I had to do a proof one last year, I think, so I think I have the survey that we can bring for that.
Good, thank you. All right, would anybody else like any more comments? We aren't going to be having further comments. With that, if there's any correspondence, it's in your packet, that meeting's adjourned. It's not on the agenda. It's not on the agenda. I guess, from my position, it matters.